It is the appointed hour, so I hereby call to order the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for May 1st, 2024. Sherry, would you call the roll, please?
Chair Quelisi.
Here.
Vice Chair Trent.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
One vacancy.
Okay. If you'll all follow me in the pledge of allegiance. Ready? You can.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lucas, any suggested changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay, very good. We'll move on to public communications. Time set aside to discuss items of city business that are not on the agenda tonight. Is there anyone here present who wishes to speak during public communications? Sherry, any raised hands out there?
No.
Very good. Then we will move on to the consent item, the minutes of the regular meeting of April 17th. Any commissioners have any?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Question about consent items.
Third item?
No, consent item.
Oh, the consent item, yes.
And that is, I know that the council...
It's on, yeah.
I know the council ran into a little problem with consent items at their last meeting. And I'd really like, if the Chair and Vice Chair and our council could take a look at the consent item process for us so we don't wind up running into the same problem the city council did when they tried to change the consent or pull one out of the pile for the consent items. What happened, I don't know if you were aware of it, it was written up in the paper, which is where I caught it. The mayor wanted to pull an item out of the consent calendar for discussion.
For discussion, yeah.
Right. It wound up at 10 o'clock at night, and of course, there was no one there to speak to it. So, because it was not on it. So, finding some mechanism to handle things pulled out of the consent pile for further discussion, it seems to me, the article in the newspaper lays out the issues pretty clearly. And trying to figure out how we could avoid the same problems that they ran into would be helpful.
Okay, well, Tais or Lucas, any suggestions?
I think generally, this commission will pull a consent item and speak to it as soon as it's pulled and not after, or not after the other items. So I don't see the same problem happening here unless we change that.
Yeah, I would also echo that our, our order of business is pretty straightforward. Consent items are pretty, are pretty straightforward as well. They're typically the minutes. On rare occasions do we have items that are considered as a part of a decision that may have been made by this body. And that's, that's pretty typical. Councils of a different order and of a different, of a different beast, obviously, in terms of providing a regulating policy and regulations. Here, we're looking at taking action on items from, from previous meetings or from actions that had been achieved previously. Sometimes monitoring to that degree. So I, I don't know that they're the same action. Still the same body in terms of how we operate, how this body operates, but different in terms of the organization. Councils set their agenda and process in terms of how they want to operate.
Right. But I'm saying, once pulled out of the stack, one, you don't have an enfranchised general public that knows that the item's going to be discussed. And in their case, they flipped on where they had come out in the prior meeting.
Just, just to be clear, I don't want to talk about an item that is not on this agenda. We're talking, we're talking about something that's happened in the past.
To whether or not it is worth the Chair and, and General Counsel and Vice Chair to look at it and, and say, do we need, based upon what happened at the city council, based upon that experience, anything modified in our consent items paragraph that leads into it, which describes how the process is supposed to be run?
From a, from a processing standpoint, I would say this body, this commission, the process is very simple. If you're going to pull one of the items for discussion, you pull the item and it's discussed immediately. There is no waiting to the end of the agenda. That's, that hasn't been identified or even voted on by this body. So it's, it's a different, different process.
That piece of it's different.
Yes, from a consent, and that's what you're focusing on. Correct.
Okay. I did have one, I did have one minor change to the minutes. On page two, top of the page, disclaimer should be disclosure. Other than that.
Good catch. Nice work.
They're both very good dis words, but I think that's the right one. Anything else? Then we should at least consider a motion for approval.
I move that we approve the amended minutes.
I will second.
Okay. Any discussion? Sherry, let's call the roll on item one, please.
Bennett? Bennett?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Quelisi?
Yes. All right. We'll move on, item two. An appeal of a director determination regarding a temporary use permit. Lucas or Maura? Oh, before we get into that, just to have it on the record, on this item, and I'll repeat it on the next one as well. I compliment you on the work of your staff, sir. We get, we get reports that are comprehensive, and when there are questions, the answers are comprehensive. And they're obviously accurate as well, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we get started, Commissioner Murphy, do you?
Yes, I would like to make a statement. As a longtime member of the Ojai Valley Women's Club Board of Directors, I am going to recuse myself this evening for this item.
Anything else?
I have a question. I have a question. Is the organization a 501(c)(3)? It was not clear.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, hold on, don't respond to that. That's something that will be brought up during the presentation. Thank you.
So just, just to let the commission know, staff has that information. I can answer, I can answer that and hopefully any other questions you have.
Really, it shouldn't be directed to one of the commissioners in that, in that case. Okay.
Are you ready? Okay.
Have at it.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, and all commissioners. So this project is an appeal of a director's decision denying a temporary use permit application for outdoor market events located at 441 East Ojai Avenue, and that's the Ojai Valley Women's Club. And the name of the organization, or the applicant and now the appellant is Conscious Collective. And specifically, Michelle Chaplin, who is here this evening. In early May of 2023, the city was made aware of weekend market events at the Ojai Valley Women's Club. Code compliance for the city of Ojai made the appellant aware that outdoor activities required review and consideration of a temporary use permit from the Community Development Department. In August 2023, a permit was requested and approved for a period of six months to gauge whether there would be any impacts to the local brick and mortar businesses. So the approval was pursuant to Section 10-2.2202E, which relates to temporary uses, which in the opinion of the director are compatible with the zone designation and surrounding land uses. You'll see that on the screen here, an E, the last, the last of the allowable uses. During the six months, business owners reached out to the Community Development Department and the Chamber of Commerce expressing concerns regarding parking and direct competition with their merchandise. On February 2nd, 2024, the appellant submitted an application requesting approval of a TUP for an additional six months of outdoor market events, and the director was unable to support the request due to the inability to make the required findings, which are included in your packet. And the request was denied. There are five types of allowable uses, as seen in this slide. Staff tried to work with the applicant in relation to the allowable uses and discussed letter B above, which is arts and crafts exhibits, carnivals, circuses, concerts, fairs, market, farmers markets, et cetera. There are other uses in there. In this section, this section that I just mentioned for the arts and crafts and fairs, there's a sponsorship requirement where the use is limited to educational, fraternal, religious, or service organizations that are directly engaged in civic or charitable efforts, or to tax-exempt organizations in compliance with Section 501(c) of the Federal Internal Revenue Code. There's also a time restraint on these events under, under B. And what those are, are an event shall not exceed five consecutive days within any 90-day period, and no more than one event or within 90 days. And also, did I already say that? Oh, well, anyway. And three events would be, could be, could be permitted within any, one day. Let me know if you have any questions about that. What's not included in the allowable uses here, A through E, is a for-profit event. So the events proposed are the appellant's livelihood, not a charitable event. And while the Women's Club is a 501(c)(3) organization, Chaplin Designs is not. From another section of the code, Section 3-802A, this relates to the film industry, which we realize is a, a separate animal. However, there's a definition of charitable institutions here, and it includes that a nonprofit, a charitable institution is a nonprofit organization which qualifies under Section 501(c)(3) of the Internal Revenue Code or Section 23701 of the California Revenue and Taxation Code as a charitable organization. The definition further goes on to that a person shall receive, no person shall receive a profit from the marketing or production of the film or from showing the film. The film industry aside, this is included in your staff report, the, the appellant, Conscious Collective, is a for-profit business. Therefore, in addition to the inability to make the findings, the Community Development Director denied the request because the proposed events don't fall within the allowable uses in the code, which I showed you in Slide 2. In an effort to guide the commission and support the appellant in meetings and conversations that we've had, staff has provided allowable alternatives, and those include holding an event indoors, which doesn't require the approval of a temporary use permit, applying for a CUP, a conditional use permit through the Planning Commission, or holding the proposed uses or events outside of the city limits in a place where they may be permitted. I heard a question this evening, but also before tonight, regarding the Ojai Valley Women's Club. And I just want you to know that in 1915, the Ojai Valley Women's Club became a, a, a nonprofit. They registered with the state of California as a nonprofit in 1915. And currently, the club is a 501(c)(3), and they're a local club. However, they're affiliated with the California as well as General Federation of Women's Clubs. So staff is recommending that you uphold the, the denial. And as I said before, we do have the applicant here or appellant if you have questions of them. And, and I'm available now for questions as well. Thank you.
Questions for staff?
Yeah, so you're, in your, in the definition, so you're saying that that was a section carved out specifically for the film industry, but you're taking that same, you're extrapolating it to this situation. You're saying that that definition of the 501(c)(3) applies here?
Well, we're looking in the code for, for definitions. And we did find that definition, and yes, it is with, it has to do with the film industry, but yes, we are using that there. And then with further research, although it's not in your staff report, a 501(c)(3) is a charitable organization. And so then if we look for the definition of what a charitable organization is, anyway, that's not for me to really define any further for you without doing, you know, more research, but, but yes, the, the answer is yes, that that's what we were doing.
And just to, just to piggyback on that, the nice thing is, is we already have that definition. We're not going out and searching for it.
Right.
It exists, it operates, it's through the film.
Yeah, we're supplying it to a different industry.
But the reality is it's still living within the municipal code and felt more comfortable than extrapolating something out from the general population and then...
Or just pulling it from the IRS code. Either way, you get the same answer.
Yeah.
Which is what I, when I just said about it, a, the definition of a 501(c)(3) being a charitable organization. Exactly. That's taken right from the IRS code.
Yeah, and their, I mean, their website, it's pretty clear.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm affiliated with a 501(c)(3), a C6, and a C9 down in Los Angeles, and they're all nonprofits. So 501(c) is for that purpose. I did have, I did have one question. In the admin report, page 3, the conclusion under finding A1 implies, as does the conclusion under finding B1 on page 4, I'm sorry, finding B2 on page 4. The implication is Conscious Collective does not pay taxes, in particular, sales tax to the city. Is that correct?
When we talked, well, this was a question that was asked of me earlier, and the vendors are not paying local sales taxes.
How is that legal? Does the same rule apply to farmers market and such?
Yeah, there is no...
Vendors don't pay local sales tax?
There is no regulation on the sales tax. If you pay cash, there's not a tax that's taken out of that.
Is it only because you're paying cash? If you write a check or you use a credit card or a debit card, then sales tax is imposed?
But also if your business is, is located outside of the city.
The point of sale is in the city, but the business is headquartered out of the city?
There's no, there's no regulation in terms of how we would, how we manage even the sales tax from that standpoint, yeah, not for markets like this.
Sounds like something that needs to be fixed.
Well, it's how they, how they structure their business and how they do their taxes. You know, how they funnel in income, and how the, how the income's reported.
All right. Any other questions for staff?
Let's see. Yeah, so you, you mentioned that you provided some alternatives, and one of those was indoor, and then you mentioned a CUP from the Planning Commission. And then you said the other alternative is outside city limits.
Yes, yes, those are the alternatives we came up with.
You have discussed those with the applicant, and they're...
Yes.
And they're not, they don't like those? Is that what? I have them speak to it. Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's what I was just, I was gonna say that, yeah. When it's, when it's their opportunity to talk, that would be a good question for them.
Okay, and, and just curious too, with it being indoors, just how would that differ than being outdoors?
The municipal code says that, is very clear that outdoor activities, outdoor events require a temporary use permit.
Oh, got it, got it, got it. Okay. So indoor wouldn't require the temporary use permit?
Correct.
Got it. Okay.
And still would involve paying no sales tax?
Well, it depends on how their business is structured, yeah.
Okay. Well, I think we understand the alternatives. Let's hear, let's, let's hear from the appellant.
Hi. Should I come here?
Yeah. Please.
Just a couple of things before I start my little speech.
I'm sorry, your name, ma'am?
Michelle Chaplin, the Conscious Collective Market. Just two things that I wanted to address is that the slides that were shown before, I have never seen before, and the one that said that...
Same here.
Yeah, the one that said that there was, that Maura and Lucas had offered as a conditional use permit, that wasn't actually ever brought up. So that's the first time I've heard of it, though I did check with the Women's Club earlier today to see if they had a conditional use permit, because I knew that that could get us back outside. And, oh, okay, well, okay. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I'm Michelle Chaplin, and I'm the Conscious Collective Market's creator and a designer myself. Since the inception of our market in August 2022, our market has flourished as an outdoor venue in the heart of Ojai, bringing together a vibrant mix of artists, entrepreneurs, community members. And I'm here today to discuss concerns regarding the denial of our temporary use permit. Allegations that our vendors compete with local businesses and that the market, market contributes to traffic overflow are unfounded and do not accurately represent our market. We pride ourselves on offering unique, locally curated items that complement rather than compete with local merchandise. These items cannot be found in any of the stores in the Ojai Valley. Our market hosts fine artists, fashion designers, jewelers, candlemakers, skincare specialists, and curators of vintage goods, among others. It attracts local residents who attend each, each event as well as local vendors from our area. While they are visiting, these local, these vendors support the local economy by frequenting restaurants, local businesses, and hotels. Visitors and shoppers also contribute to the local economy, spending the weekends in Ojai, staying in hotels, dining at restaurants, shopping at local stores, and enjoying Ojai's landscape. The Conscious Collective Market is a welcoming space where families with strollers, pet owners with their dogs, and individuals in wheelchairs can comfortably navigate and enjoy the offerings. Our market's outdoor setting enhances accessibility and enjoyment for the visitors, emphasizing the important, importance of maintaining the outdoor environment. We have proposed various solutions to keep the market outdoors, such as utilizing part of the parking lot for vendors, combining indoor/outdoor spaces, even reducing the market's frequency to once a month. Despite these efforts, none of the proposed solutions have been accepted. We have invested significant resources in promoting the market, include paid social media ads, flyer design, and communication with vendor signups. We've also advertised in the Ojai Quarterly. We are now unable to apply the future dates until temporary use permit is, is resolved. This situation feels like discrimination against artists, creators, and makers, particularly as the city of Ojai allows farmers markets to operate weekly without similar restrictions, even though they sell items available at local stores. Our market also supports community and historical initiatives, such as sponsoring the Ojai Valley Women's Club, a nonprofit housed in a historic building. The funds provided from our market help to preserve this landmark and highlight the harmony between our outdoor market and the preservation of community landmarks, reflecting what makes Ojai special. Thank you for your time. I urge you to reconsider the measures that would prevent the Conscious Collective Market from operating outdoors.
Okay.
That's where I'm at.
Hold on. Any questions for the appellant?
Yeah, just to make sure, you said something that I just wanted to clarify. So you, just to make sure I understand the model. So you're saying that it's like a farmers market concept with local artisans?
It is. I, I host the market, and it's usually around 20 to 25 vendors. 60% of them are going to be local Ojai, and then the other 40% will be Ventura County, Santa Barbara County, Las Virginas County, and the Los Angeles County. Yeah, but we, I've tried to make it only local, local Ojai, and it's been really hard to get that many people to sign up for anything, that many artists at one place.
Right, right. And, and the reason I kind of just touched is because you've mentioned discrimination against artists, and obviously, we're an artist, an artist community.
Which is why you would think that having an outdoor market space for visitors and locals to come to would be an added bonus rather than taking away.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that. Thanks for the clarity. I was just wanted to make sure I understand that point.
Is it fair to say you lease the space from the Women's Club, and then you sublease the space, the spaces to the individual?
I don't consider it a sublease. I consider it a hosting, because I actually have event insurance and I cover all of their... What?
Is it per event that you're, that you apply to, to get the? Because you have to apply for the space to get the time. So is it every event you have to do it? Like, it's every single time you have to apply and get that?
I actually have the event insurance covered, the dates of my markets for...
What I guess what I'm trying to say is, you have to go through the Chamber of Commerce, right? Because they're the ones that...
Well, the Chamber of Commerce, the Women's Club is actually who I work with. And I pay directly to them, but I drop it off at Kelly at the Chamber of Commerce.
I, I guess what we're trying to understand is this, is it like a month-to-month lease? Is it sort of agreement? Or is it just every single event has its own, you know, set parameters?
So at the beginning of the year, the Ojai Valley Women's Club and I sit down, and I, I pitch my dates, and we go over the books, and then we, we...
You map it out like that?
Yeah, so that we're, you know, hitting, you know, the right, the right times. Yeah.
All right, makes sense. Does that make sense to you?
Thank you.
And then, and I think for, for me in particular, when it came to the denial, the denial, from what I understood, it wasn't going over the 501(c). It actually went and said, that it interferes with the enjoyment of the neighboring and existing or future developments, that it is detrimental to the public convenience, health, interest, safety, and welfare, and would depreciate property values in the immediate vicinity. I have it here if you'd like to read it. This is the denial. Okay.
One other point that was brought out in the staff report was that sponsorship of an event under a TUP is supposed to be by a nonprofit. Are you a nonprofit or are you a for-profit company?
I'm not a nonprofit, but...
I'm sorry, you're not?
I'm not a nonprofit, but I have been waiting for the definition of sponsorship for the past month and a half from Maura, because you guys didn't actually have it, what it is. So sponsors by definition is in the context of a business or organization. Sponsor refers to a person that promotes, advocates, or favors a business venture. Can investment in a security or a limited partnership?
Does that sound like you?
Yeah, I'm, I'm contributing towards the Ojai Valley Women's Club, which is a nonprofit.
But you are, you are the sponsor of the event, and you're the one that's making the application for the event, correct? Okay, seems like a pretty bright line. Okay, any other questions for the appellant? Thank you, ma'am. We may ask you to come back again if we have more questions. I have six cards here. I'll take them in the order they were presented. First, Bill Miley.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Miley. My family has lived in the city for 55 years. I am lacking on some information about the permitting process, so I could be wrong below. But so far, these are my thoughts. It seems plain that Conscious Collective is a profit organization and does not fit the nonprofit code requirement. It seems the past history granting the temporary use permit was an error. As the code says, outdoor sales... As the code says, outdoor sales only by nonprofits. Also, the issue, the type of products don't seem, doesn't seem to meet the code. And there are vendors from out of town and they supply, some of them supply non-artesian products. The decision not to renew and there was generated by complaints written in oral from local business people. The fact that product sales were significantly lower than similar products does not seem to violate the commercial code. I looked up the definition of nonprofits. Do nonprofits have to pay sales tax? State government says, in most cases, the answer is yes. Without additional information, I choose to believe the appeal should be denied and never should have been approved. Outdoor events like the tent event in front of Blues a couple of weeks ago, how did that get permitted? Were they nonprofit? And they compete. It seems these kinds of permit, these kinds of permits may be done in less than a standard protocol manner and should be reviewed by your commission for upgrading. In summary, I support the planning director's denial, supported by strict interpretation of the city ordinance, and also a vision of what O-Hi's economic future, present and future should be and is. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Next up, Barbara Bowman. After that, Larry Steingold.
Good evening. Uh, nice to see all of you. Uh, I think we need to do a little history here, okay? And I can give the history because I've been doing the retail for forty-three years. So I can look at paying sales tax, which the city gets a percent of for forty-three years. I'm sure it's over hundreds of thousands of dollars over all these years. Property tax. I pay the property tax. I own the property, but people that rent from property owners, they're also paying the sales tax because they're paying rent. So the city is getting money from the property tax, okay? Not only that, within, within the city, when you have a prop-
Bill's, Bill, sorry.
Okay, that's good. When you have within the city a property tax, you pay so much for the lights, so much for the library, so much for the sewer, okay? So I'm standing here saying I'm paying a lot to have a store in O-Hi. I'm, and a tremendous amount, as are all the renters, because I can guarantee you renters, the price is passed on to them. So they're also here to give you history. They're here through the first recession, the second recession, COVID closed for four months when everybody got sick, the fires when we were all shut down, then the floods. So all these people are paying rent, property taxes. They're doing this all the time and they do pay their sales tax and their sales tax are tracked because they pay them within the city. You're paying them to the city where you are or as it goes to the Ventura, the state. You get credit for it based on where we're located. All these vendors that come, and it's not, it's not sixty percent local, that I guarantee you, those vendors are not paying sales tax to, you're getting no percent of it whatsoever. The county isn't. If you want to have this event, and she wants to have this, and there are wonderful talented people in O-Hi who can't afford to pay rent, then it should be only vetted for talent within the O-Hi Valley. And then they should be indoors and she could do it, you know, once a month and it could only be, and we get to vet it. It has to be vetted that it's O-Hi Valley. I don't want to deny anybody within O-Hi who can't rent a store being able to sell their goods. But the thing is, when you say that the, and they would have to pay sales tax because they live here. So it has to be people within this valley that do it, not outside people. They get to swoop in. All of a sudden, we're hot commodity. Where were they when we were having fires and floods and depressed? Where are they Monday through Friday when there's nobody to shop? We still have to have our doors open. We're still paying the lights, the electricity, the gas, the sales tax. We're paying all of that regardless. They are not. They swoop in, O-Hi's a hot commodity right now. Let's have a market. There were three markets one weekend at a time. None of these should be approved because it's taking advantage of all the years we've put in to make this city exceptional. They get to swoop in now and, you know, God, great. We did this, chain stores started wanting to come in. We stopped that, which was a brilliant thing. So if you're more, what is it, four or five, then you can't come in. Because all of a sudden, they want to be here because they want O-Hi as their name. So this is like, let's wait till everything's successful and then we're going to go in and we'll be really successful at this. So there's no doubt that it was very good that it was turned down. And I think that there's twenty-three people that signed petitions, am I right, Lucas? Of stores that don't want this, that are-
There's twenty-six.
Twenty-six, okay. So I mean, if, if we took the time to go to all of them, they would all say no. I mean, just like they did on sales. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Larry Steingold, and after that, Jamie Fleming.
Uh, Larry Steingold, um, resident. I think you have to deny this because it's not the usage in the permitted zone. If she comes here and gets a variance, she's good to go. Because that's what she, you would be doing by approving this or giving her the permit. You're essentially saying the u- the usage area is now different. It's okay to go here.
C one?
Am I right?
I think it's C one, right?
Right, but the, but the problem is the usage. It's her usage as a non- not a nonprofit. It's a profit. Whatever it is, she needs a variance. She's got to change the law if she wants. So you, if you give her the permit, you're essentially saying the laws that you have on the books are meaningless and you don't enforce them. So you either enforce the law, she has to come and get a variance, or try to get a variance, and make the changes. It's not that difficult. Well, it's difficult to do, but it's not, the concept is not difficult. So if you want to go forward, I would suggest get a variance. Because then you do what you have to do and you go about it the correct way. Otherwise, they're the, they're the gatekeeper. They're the ones who have said, this is the way the law reads. This is specific. You're not a nonprofit, yada, yada, yada. And the sales tax thing, that we have to come, either charge, because either they're paying rent or they're getting, giving a piece of the action to the Women's Club. And if they're given a piece of that, piece of the action, it's going to be coming from a big number. Otherwise, it's just rent. So. And they're not a sponsor. Otherwise, they'd be going like us. Come to the concert. You know, but anyway, they need a variance, so.
Thank you, Larry. Jamie Fleming, and next up, Dion Blue.
Jamie Fleming, uh, CEO of the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, we also completely back uh, the director's denial of this um, application. I don't even know where to start. There are so many issues that we have with this and I had a whole speech lined up, but after seeing the really clear-cut elements put up there, I want to spend more time really talking about the fact that I feel a lot of people get deceived a little bit as to some of the rhetoric I hear. I have walked into this market and I would not, I would agree with Barbara and some of the others, that's not sixty percent local, first of all. Secondly, the part that is not local are merchandisers, some I would almost equate as wholesalers and it does make an impact. My phone goes off the hook on Mondays after one of these weekends where stores talk about their parking lots full, uh, their sales are being competi- competitively impacted because they'll walk in, that person will have vintage clothes, they sell vintage clothes, they have dresses. There's a finite dollar that comes into this town every weekend. The other issue we have is, what day are they on? Saturday. What's the only day our, our stores can sell? Anything. Saturdays. So it's also another direct write-in there. And I know it's not part of this code, but I'm just pleading that we cannot get caught up in, it's okay to have outside merchandisers just come walking in here, pay a hundred dollars for their booth, and as Barbara was saying, they're paying employees, taxes, overhead seven days a week. And it's just a very, in our opinion, unfair entry into our uh, commercial world. On a positive note, because we'll probably hear from some artists, I'm just guessing, who'll say they need places to uh, uh, show and sell their wares. Every store, the chamber, we all are in favor in the city, even in my discussion with them. We want our local artists to have a place to sell. What we are really working at, we are, and I wrote down some real fast here. You have the uh, O-Hi Music Festival's Holiday Marketplace. You have the Beaches Woods Art Fair was just took place. You have the Art Centers, Art in the Park, just to name some of the big ones that just already take place. But more importantly, in working with the city lately, we are now trying to carve some of the uh, events that are already every year on the calendar downtown to include more local artists. I agree with Barbara and other speakers, let's help our locals. Let's not help people from outside just come in and make a buck on us. And so I wrote down where we're headed and they're all spread out. So frequency is the other thing that I hear from stores. Michelle wants every other week or at least once a month. The spirit of the code, when they did this was for um, once every three months. I'm going to just quickly read these. April, Tangerine Celebration, only local artists and vendors took place. Only local artists and vendors. That was in April and that was to support the tangerine growth. June, Local Lavender Celebration. Only local artists and vendors took place last year and they'll do the same. So that's another place for our local artists. October, O-Hi Day, the city is begging the local artists to please come. They want more, more booths. They can't get them all to come. And so it's hard for me to hear them say, we don't have a place. So O-Hi Day is begging for them to come out and sell. The uh, Music Festival's Holiday Festival I already mentioned, that's November. December, this last year, we started off with the lighting ceremony downtown, Santa and all that stuff. Well, we had a few local vendors and now we want to increase that because December's an important time for our local artists. So already there, we're already spreading out. So I just want to make sure, before you hear more people talk about there aren't places for our local artists to sell, we're working at it because we really all want to support them. That's O-Hi. So I hope that helps.
Thank you, sir. Dion Blue, and then Andrew Stasi? Is that? Forgive me if I mispronounce.
Andrew Stasi? Just kidding. Um, my name is Dion Blue and I have a store called Danski at three-two-one East O-Hi Avenue. And I um, totally support the denial of the permit. That's the bottom line. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Andrew Stasi?
Hi, uh, Andrew Stasi. I have a office in town, three oh five East Matilla House Street. My wife, uh, Dion Danski owns a store here in town. Also support the planning director's decision to deny the permit. I know you are in receipt of over twenty-six signed letters from brick-and-mortar stores here in town. Many of those stores have been here, some of them as long as a century. There, it's a serious issue. Nobody wants to deny anybody the right to pursue a living, but we all want to do it. It needs to be done within the framework of the general plan intent, particularly the circulation and the land use element. These events don't fall squarely at all within the intent of the general plan. Uh, additionally, um, you have to consider the traffic and parking issues. If you have twenty-five vendors at one event, you can add twenty-five vehicles, you've got the additional traffic, you've got the uh, additional parking constraints. So you, you really can't, uh, even if you were to consider a variance or a conditional use permit, you must vet all of the impacts. That's by code, that's by law, and that's our responsibility. This needs to be done within the framework of the general plan. It needs to be done within the framework of the ordinance. The ordinance is clear. Nonprofit. These are for-profit events. Frankly, it doesn't matter if it's in a hotel parking lot, if it's in a commercial store parking lot, or it's at the Women's Center. It's still the same issue. If you are displacing uh, these parking lots and creating these events, who's done the study of the traffic impact, the parking? And additionally, I think the twenty-six brick-and-mortar stores and counting that have signed this letter that you've received have made it very, very clear. This has an impact on their business. It would be laughable if you allowed a, or even considered laughable, a retail store to put a Murphy better in their store and fold it down for rent at night. It's laughable to allow an event like this in a hotel, in a business, uh, put, fold it down at night for rent, excuse me. So at the end of the day, this is a bigger issue and frankly, whether you put it indoors or outdoors, it's the same issue. Think of it like a balloon, water in a balloon. You press the water in one place, the parking doesn't go away. The traffic impact doesn't go away. So if there is in fact not an ordinance regarding pop-up stores and indoor locations, the auditorium was never considered when it was permitted and built as a commercial space. The Women's Center was not designed for this. A hotel was not designed for this. So additionally, take into consideration the Business and Professions Code twenty-one, six, forty-two, and three as you're looking for definition, as it regard- regarding, sorry, regarding uh, open-air markets, flea markets, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here present who wishes to speak on this item? Please come forward. I'll take your card.
I'm Jess Mahary and I have rented a store in town. I have a jewelry store. Um, I feel differently about this. I was one of those young people thirty-five years ago, really thankful to have festivals like this. I believe O-Hi does support artists. And I think that this new makers markets that I've been here twenty-six years seems fairly new. I would say, I'm not really familiar with the makers markets, but I know there's an amazing makers market that's growing and tons of people love it in Ventura. I think this could work if there are defi- you could define what and how it's done. You know, there are rules, there's taxes that could be discussed, there's new ways to innovate supporting artists. You know, Barbara mentioned, you know, these young artists aren't paying the sewage and this electricity. Well, they don't have sewage and electricity. They're coming in for one day. They're in their twenties. There, a lot of them have jobs doing waitressing and they need a place to try to see if their things that they make are sellable. I can guarantee they're not making a ton of money at these markets. It's giving them a sense that they can follow their dreams. It might be the confidence that they need to actually become what they're meant to be in the maker form that they're doing. And it's a great idea to condense it to O-Hi locals. That's wonderful. I think if you do allow this, you just get tight on how and the rules should be and the guidelines and tax the people. Make money off it. Make it be a very profitable thing. People come into this town. My jewelry store has tons of people coming in from these markets. I have a high-end jewelry store. My pieces go for, you know, it's a whole variety of prices. It doesn't mean they're not going to buy my things. It means they might go to the coffee store and come by and maybe get a pair of earrings. Or, you know, it's up to me to market myself. It's up to all of us to be, you know, the parking is crazy in town. Whether there is a makers market or not, our town is getting, it's taking me ten minutes, every one of us, to get out and in and out of these things. Mark, the makers markets, sure, it's bringing people in because I see hundreds of people excited to come in to see what these young people are making. And if it's soap or if it's, a lot of these things, they're just trying to make their dreams in a way come true. So I do believe, yes, there are areas that need to be tightened up. And I think Michelle would be so willing to work if, if it's a certain time of year or if it's a certain place. And I don't know why inside or outside would make a difference. It's, there's twenty-five p- little tables. They bring a bridge table. And what it really stands for is, are we a community that's open and embracing how we can progressively go forward? And actually support people and their dreams and not be shunning them in that way. I, I, I think it needs to be approved and there has to be guidelines so all of the stores feel comfortable accepting this new form of selling, like all these other communities do in America. These makers markets are the, the hip things in these towns. And I, that's what I have to say.
Thank you ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Once again, is there anyone else here present who wishes to speak? Please come forward.
I didn't give you a card, I'm so sorry, but I'll give you one after. My name's Michelle Bosch and, um, I'm here with-
Michelle?
Bosch, B-O-S-C-H. Oh, thank you for making me a card. And I'm a store owner as well on the arcade with my partner here. Um, and, um, there's some points with what Jessica just said that I agree with. Being open to local artists is an absolute must for our town. And there's several of us that do that today. And Michelle's probably having some hard time getting local artists because there's venues for them today, whether it's in Poppy's, um, our store, we, we do soaps. We open up for locals all the time and sell their goods, um, seven days a week, not just one day a week. So that we can do that, we do that with staff which are local, we pay local taxes, just like what Barbara was saying. And the, the whole point is to work together and make our community stronger and better. That's an absolute. But following rules and regulations like all of us do is an absolute and a must because there is regulations that we all have to follow. And that's a fair thing to do. So whether there's competition or not competition with local stores or not local stores, that's okay. Competition is good. It breeds innovation, it breeds a lot of different things. But not following the rules isn't a fair level playing field. And that's, I think, where all the local merchants are saying is, you gotta follow the rules. You can't just make a parking lot a retail space. You can't just pop up on a Saturday on our busiest day and not be here. Can't say you're here for the community, but just be here on a Saturday and not the rest of the days. We're open seven days a week for a purpose and it costs us money to be open seven days a week. And it's because we work hard to cultivate our local business. And a lot of locals don't wanna come downtown on Saturdays, right? And we hear that time and time again, but to bring our locals down to the arcade, we committed to being open seven days a week and that's an expense to do that. And so, I guess what I'm just saying is, whether it's Michelle and the Conscious Collective, whether it's Blue doing something, Bank, on the Bank of America lot, or whatever's happening in these things, they just have to follow the rules that we all have to follow. And that's what I would ask for you to uphold. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We had another speaker prospectively? Thank you.
Okay, so I just wanted to speak on behalf of a younger generation because I feel like a lot of people in this room are over the age of thirty. And I, a little, well, I just wanted to say, um, that I also work in a retail store full-time in Ojai. And I try to take Saturdays off so I can go to these markets and I try to get a fifteen-minute break so I can go to these markets, as well as some in Ventura that are held on Saturday, um, every couple of months as well. And I really just wanted to talk about the enjoyment that these markets bring for me and my friends. Um, I went to school in UC Santa Cruz and maybe, um, a couple of weekends ago, or not a couple of weekends ago, when the markets were held. Uh, my friends actually drove down to come visit these markets with me. And my friends from Ventura, my friends from LA, we all kind of get together and it's a really fun experience because, yes, we do have the opportunity to visit these stores seven days a week and see the goods. But what Michelle's doing is bringing in a whole new perspective of artists, which I love because I can go see really cool, unique vintage clothing that I'm not normally able to see in Ojai or really incredible skincare that's handmade, um, that I don't normally see. And so, I just really wanted to talk about how fun it is for me and my friends to come on these Saturdays. And, um, usually when we do all come, we'll go to breakfast after and we will walk around all the stores. Um, and, um, let's see what else I have to say. Yeah, so also, um, with this taxing thing, I know it's gonna be super easy. Michelle could be able to charge sale tax, sales tax. That seems like a very easy fix. For parking, um, I work in the weekdays as well and parking's literally horrible every single day. I've actually had to start riding my bike because it's so horrible. Um, and so, they, what I'm thinking is maybe it would be a good idea for, um, stores to have designated parking spots in front of their store if they feel so inclined. Or maybe, um, there can be another parking lot built. I'm not sure, 'cause there's a huge increase in people coming to Ojai now, so not even on Saturdays, um, but Thursdays. I can't even find parking. So that's another point that I wanted to make. And, yeah, um, I just, I've, I feel like also on Saturdays, they're a really busy day. And I have had so many people tell me like, "Oh, I've just gone to the market, oh, I'm coming here," you know? So it is bringing more people to Ojai, which is in the end going to increase sales in all the stores. So that's just what I wanted to say. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, ma'am.
Can we have your name?
Um, Isabella Henderson.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wrote on the green card.
It's, it looks like it says Zella.
Oh, well, that's why I go by Zella.
Saving all the cards.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else here present who wishes to speak on this item? Sherry, do we have anyone with a raised hand out there?
No.
All right. Then we will end the public comment portion of this item. Bring it back to our sadly depleted commissioner here. For discussion.
Short two. Well, yeah, I think, um, this one's a tricky one because I think we, as a community, we obviously have more folks coming into our town than we've ever had. We've got projects on the books that are gonna be built that'll probably increase our population larger than we've ever had it in our history. So how do we balance that with the weakened infrastructure that we have with our parking and our streets? And what I'm concerned about is we have this influx of folks coming in and we've got, you know, we still have fire concerns, we still have flood concerns. So I always go back to what Lucas said a long time ago and he said, "How does this benefit our city? How does this benefit Ojai?" So I'm trying to figure out how this business benefits Ojai. Um, I like the idea of keeping it local, that'll benefit local artists, but it sounds like there's a lot of options for those folks. Um, I do like the variety aspect that Zella brought up. I think that's important to have, you know, different varieties and different, uh, things coming into Ojai to make it vibrant. You know, I, I'm, I think that's maybe the benefit, but I'm still trying to wrap my head around, does that outweigh some of the negative impacts which we've heard, uh, from our store owners, we've heard from residents as far as parking and traffic and that sort of thing? So trying to weigh those different things. And then also, obviously, we've got the issue with the, the nonprofit, so I don't know how we get around that.
Okay, Jamie?
I think Ms. Bosch said it, and that is, we have rules that attempt to ameliorate these problems. And we need those rules to be followed, is my, my take. I think a rethink on them makes sense. A complete top-to-bottom rethink on them. But, uh, uh, because I do like the accommodation of, um, of new artists who may not be set up the way in which some of them are. Um, and that is, they know how to work the, the circuit. But, um, and I do know that's part of the vibrancy of the town. But if you're a merchant and you have two parking spaces in front of your store, which is probably the average, um-
At least on Ojai Avenue.
Yeah, on Ojai Avenue. That, um, you know, and one of them is filled with the vendor who is across the street selling. And I don't have a, I don't have a space for my client to come in and, and visit. It's, uh, it's, I think it's gotta be devastating to see this flood of retail coming in without adequate parking and adequate regulation. So I, uh, um, you know, I, I'm empathetic with the, with the merchants in this case. I'm surprised, I'm not surprised to hear that sixty percent of the artists in this one marketplace are local and forty percent are from out of town. And I'm not sure that that's, that's terrible. But I think we ought, we ought to work on it as a, as a community. I think we need to look at this issue and say, do we have adequate controls? Do we have adequate enforcement?
Right.
And, uh, uh, and there's no question what a 501(c)(3) is. It's, you know, it's a nonprofit.
Yeah, I think that's-
There's no question about what a sponsorship is.
It's pretty clear.
You know, your relationship, uh, is, is defined. So I, I, I don't see that much new and ambiguous. And, and I, you know, like everyone else has been, have been impacted by, uh, some of the markets that have popped up um, in that you just can't, you can't, you can't park, you can't walk on the sidewalk. You can't, you know, things have gotten very crowded on, on a, on a Saturday. Uh, and I try and not be a NIMBY. And, uh, so, but, you know, I, I'm not sure that the rules that we have currently serve us very well. So I think we ought to look at those. But I don't think we're gonna make new rules in the context of the adjudication of one issue in one marketplace that, uh, has been brought to our attention, so. That's it.
Okay, thank you. I, I'm, I'm reminded of a case that came before the planning commission several years ago now, where, where a group wanted to put together what was really a delightful mixed-use commercial, office, retail, restaurant, and housing project on the avenue. The rules didn't allow it at the time. Through the issuance of SPL overlays, we've had some changes to what can be done with property along Ojai Avenue. And so, for some people, they can take advantage of the new rules. But at that time, they could not. Regrettable, not regrettable, I thought it was a great project, but the folks that wanted to put it in folded because they couldn't meet the rules. And I think we have the same situation here. There may be alternative places for artists to go, there may not. We may need to review and possibly change the rules, but what we're working with right now is the rules that we have. And so, my inclination is to uphold the denial and let's see what we can do. There are other, there are other, uh, periodic, weekly, or bi-weekly, um, venues that currently have operating permits. And outside the boundaries of this case, I would like to talk about those and understand what the differences are and why some things have permits and some don't. But with this, with this particular case, I don't see any way out of the 501(c)(3) requirement.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's a big one.
Maura?
There aren't any, um, outdoor market events that have permits currently. They're all finished. They, they're, any, any that had, um, any that had a permit, um, their permit is now expired. You know, they, their events went until a certain month and, and there, yeah, there are no more approvals.
Got it. Um, I had a, I had a question for staff. With the options that you guys have outlined up there, were those conditional outlines? Or were those like alternatives to? I'm just confused on how those would apply with the, with this-
I'm sorry, which, are you talking about A through E or?
Uh, that, you had those options with, uh, they could go indoor, temporary use permit, uh, they could do CUP.
Those were, those are, those are alternatives that wouldn't require a temporary use permit.
That doesn't apply to this.
Right, well, an in, right, an indoor event doesn't require a temporary use permit. The, the code says that if it's outdoors, it does.
It's outdoors.
And a conditional use permit is more of a permanent permit and that's something that comes before the planning commission.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And it, and it would be, put, a request for a CUP-
Yes.
Would come from-
Oh.
The parcel owner, at least in part.
Well, the parcel-
I would expect because a CUP lives with the parcel.
The parcel owner would have to, um-
At least agree to it.
Agree to it by signing the application. They also had to sign the application for the TUP. But yes, they would have to sign the, the application for a CUP as well.
Because that would be tied to the property.
Okay.
Um, and then another question, um, and this goes to Larry's point. Um, would it require a variance? Would like, how would a variance apply with that?
There isn't a variance opportunity for a temporary use permit that's been denied. There, there isn't a variance opportunity.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just to clarify that, it, a variance is, is, is something in, in regards to our already existing standards, like some sort of, um, quantitative standard versus something we're talking about here versus more qualitative? So from that standpoint, really you're looking at a change in the code.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Versus a variance. A variance is not a change in the code.
I got you.
A variance is a temporary exception to the code.
Right, yeah, overrides.
Not temporary.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's a, it's an exception to the code.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Anything else then? Well, it's decision time. We need a motion.
Um, I'll make a motion to, um, uh, to uphold the Community Development Director's determination to deny the request of the temporary use permit. And that's it.
Okay, second that. All right, any discussion?
Um, I would like, um, the applicant to explore the other alternatives that the, the city has outlined. Because I do think what you're providing has value for sure. And I'm, you know, I'd like to see how that can be explored, you know, within the confines of the code, of course. Which is a question. I think we're in the middle of it.
We're, we're gonna vote first, then if we wanna talk about things, we'll do that. So Sherry, let's call a roll on item two, please.
Bennett?
Hi.
Trent?
Yeah.
Quillissey?
Yes. Yes, ma'am, you wanted to say something else, please come to the, to the podium.
I have more of a question. Um, my question is regarding the conditional use permit because I think that, um, the Women's Club is the one that has to apply for this. Is that incorrect?
So, uh, two things. One, we can definitely talk about this during office hours. Um, but the other thing is, is that you can apply for it, but the, uh, property owner has to have a signature on the application.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're gonna swap planners here now? Item three, the next one up, is a proposed text amendment 24-001 regarding SB nine.
Yeah, can we take a quick recess while we get reorganized here?
It's, uh, currently 7:08. Let's say 7:20, let's come back in session.
Sounds good.
Lose our entire audience. Lose our entire audience.
John.
[inaudible]
Okay, folks, it is twenty after seven. We're going to go back on the record, and we're going to start with item three, a proposed text amendment and ordinance regarding Senate Bill nine. Take it away.
Thank you, I'll, I'll start, and then Sarah has a PowerPoint presentation. But I wanted to give
Before you do that, I want to compliment Sarah as well. I complimented Maura on item two. This, I always ask a bunch of questions. The report was well-written when we started. I asked, I don't know, a dozen and a half questions or so.
Seventeen.
For clarity. And I got a lot of clarity
Who's counting?
From this lady. Pardon me? I
And Maura got three, yes. No, that's good.
But, but thank you, thank you.
The questions are important.
You have a good staff here, and they make it easy for us to make informed decisions.
Well, the land use stuff is, is sometimes difficult to digest, so we try to make it simple, to dumb it down to a certain degree. I agree a hundred percent. Sorry, for the record, my name is Lucas Seibert, community development director here for the city of Ojai. As I'd said before, Sarah's going to power, provide a brief PowerPoint. Our focus tonight is on the items that you had asked for clarification on. We've put those in the staff report, Sarah's going to go over those. But I wanted to just kind of give an overall history of, just for, for this body as a reminder. This item was first discussed and considered by the city council in 2021, at the very end. A lot of discussion, an urgency ordinance went forward, ended up not getting the required supermajority as an urgency ordinance would. And then the law went into effect January first of 2022. We've been grappling with it, as well as any applicants that have been coming forward. We've had about five or six, count them, two applications that came in, one that withdrew, one that actually just recently went forward and is at the doorstep for approval, which is one piece, and the other piece is obviously outside of our hands, which is a financial piece, in terms of how they worked that out with the bank. For us, in terms of what we're looking at for the process, council had asked for this to be brought back as a part of the considerations, so that's why this body is reviewing it as a, as a part of Title X. And this body has already seen this ordinance in a draft or term sheet format twice before. So this is the third time, and really, we're focusing on those areas that this body had asked for clarification on. And that's, that's it from my standpoint, and I think Maura's going to go in. No, not Maura, sorry, Sarah, right over there. Sarah's going to go into just the points that we had talked about at the last meeting in March.
That's correct. My name is Sarah Marshall, I'm a planner for the city of Ojai. And prepared this PowerPoint to just show an overview of those changes we made to the ordinance based on our last hearing. So, counts, commissioners.
Going to share the screen here?
Yep. There we go.
So during our last hearing, we were directed to come back with a definition of an airspace subdivision, which is now included in the ordinance to read that an airspace subdivision is the three-dimensional subdivision of space above or below a lot, or partially above and below a lot, having finite width, length, and upper and lower elevations occupied by a building or portion thereof. And I think Tyus might be able to explain that a bit more, break it down for us.
So the, the most common place you see this is with condos, where there are vertical parcels, basically, and different people own the different vertical parcels. That might help to imagine what this is.
This looks like a five level, underground parking garage, where each of the levels of the parking garage is a different parcel.
Yeah, there's no limit under the law of how many different parcels you can, how many vertical parcels you can have.
I'm sorry, oh, SB nine?
Not SB nine specific, but generally, if you were to divide a parcel
SMA, yes, does that.
Yes, yes, it would be through the MAP Act.
And the reason this is coming up for SB nine is because under SB nine, no parcel may be further subdivided into a condo minimum or airspace subdivision after any urban lot split. So the language is taken verbatim from state law.
And just to even go a step further, that means that once this is done, there is no going to a second alternative, which would be through the subdivision MAP Act or Chapter Three.
Last time, staff was also directed to have additional limitations or requirements for unit floor area. Previously, the ordinance had been written that any new SB nine unit must have a floor area of at least eight hundred square feet. And then staff prepared these four other options, which would allow for properties that are five thousand square feet or less, the unit floor area shall be no more than one thousand two hundred square feet. For properties that are between five thousand and ten thousand square feet, the unit floor area shall be no more than one thousand eight hundred square feet. For properties that are between ten thousand and twenty thousand square feet, the unit floor area shall be no more than twenty-five hundred square feet. And for properties that are greater than twenty thousand square feet, the unit floor area shall be no more than three thousand square feet.
Can you tell us right off the top? I, I know that, that the different sizes of parcels in residential areas have different zone numbers, R zero, R one, R two, whatever. Let's, let's just take the first one. For a property that's five thousand square feet or less, what size residence is allowed on a five thousand square foot parcel? Is there a limit?
Yeah, it's limited to lot coverage, which would be
Lot, lot coverage, but FAR could be different.
Well, only in certain circumstances, I think in the VMU do we have FAR, everything else is lot coverage. So we don't, we don't carry, we don't carry FAR, which is the vertical portion for most of the city, only within certain circumstances.
Residential zones, FAR is not a
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I'll double check that, pause that, pause that comment, because I want to make sure that we're covering the specific residential zones, but I think it's just VMU. And maybe, maybe something in, in the commercial, but commercials is what we're talking about.
It's typically thirty-five percent or so.
Yes. Thirty-five is pretty typical.
Okay, so on a five thousand square foot lot, that says seventeen fifty?
Seventeen fifty, thirty-five percent. So then you could have your primary residence combined with the lot split.
Can't hear you.
Oh, sorry, oh, my mic. So you could have the, the primary residence along with the, the lot split, that have to be under seventeen fifty, right? Well, those are some small homes.
What?
Yeah, the, the total square footage of the five thousand has to be under thirty-five percent, so with both dwellings, both, you know, the, the primary and the lot split, it has to be a combination of seventeen fifty. That's the max.
I'm not, I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's everything, that's everything.
When, when we're talking about a property of five thousand square feet or less, is that prior to the split or after the split?
Yeah, after the split.
Yeah, the maximum, the maximum square footage of all the buildings that could be built on there would be seventeen fifty.
I'm not, I'm not sure about that. If it's, if, if it, if it's a five thousand square foot parcel and you split it in half, then the thirty-five hundred, the thirty-five percent lot coverage will give you seventeen fifty, total.
Yeah, well, that's
What, what if there, what if it's a five thousand square foot lot, and there's a two thousand square foot house on it now? Does that mean you can't do SB nine?
We can't preclude SB nine from taking place. You're still allowed to do the four, the four units. So what it would do is it would limit the, the size of those units to no more than, I think it's eight hundred square feet.
Yeah, it's like
So you could have two thousand eight hundred square feet?
This is no more than twelve hundred square feet, if we're, if we're talking about what we're looking at here, versus, so remember, the last conversation we were having is the floor versus the ceiling. And now we've added a ceiling, so there's a lid on it, versus a floor to it, so we've taken away the
The minimums, yes.
Yeah.
So are you saying
Always eight hundred.
Yep.
Would all four units on this SB split have to be between eight hundred and twelve Would all four units on this SB split have to be between 800 and 1,200?
Well, let me just, let me just put it this way.
No ones.
Yeah, the way in which the government code reads and the way in which we have to apply this rule is we cannot have standards that preclude the development, right? So we're still looking at a floor versus a ceiling. So no more than 1,200 square feet, no less than eight. Eight is per government code.
And that only applies to any new SB nine unit, not an existing structure?
So if the original primary is more than 1,200, that's okay. Cuz it's original.
Correct.
And you do the lot split, and then you can put another 800 square foot or up to 1,200 square foot.
On the new.
Building.
On the new 2,500.
On on the other 2,500 square feet.
So one 25 square foot lot has over 1,200. That's, that goes above the livable space.
Yeah, and just.
Not to mention setbacks.
So, hold on, you're, you're looking at standards that while we do have control over them, if, again, if it precludes development, then guess what? Those standards get parked. Okay? One thing to note is something that we're, that we're seeing in ADU law, which which speaks to lot coverage, so essentially, lot coverage wouldn't, wouldn't apply. If you're applying for these.
Are are SB nine units ADUs? I thought we were told at the last meeting, they are not. They are SB nine units.
They are SB nine units, correct.
Okay.
They qualify as SB nine units, but they can also be, and Tyus, correct me if I'm wrong here, but they can also be ADUs and fall under those standards and still be considered a unit, and then as thus.
They have to follow this standard as well.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's kind of a slippery slope in terms of how we address it.
But it's, it's how they apply, right? So they either apply for the SB nine lot split, or they apply for like an ADU.
Well, if you do the ADU, then you're limited, if, all you do is strictly ADU, you're limited to the, to the ADU and the junior ADU and the main unit.
But if you do an SB nine, then you have an open, then you're, then you can use an.
Can't hear you.
Sorry.
Then you can use an ADU as one of your developments.
Correct.
Yeah.
You still have to have, so four is the maximum, there still has to be two mains, and then you identify the other two. Either as just two units, or you identify them as ADUs or junior ADUs. The reality is, is, is it's not as important, and I think this is probably getting to to the chair's point earlier, which is we were told that they aren't ADUs. Well, they kind of are, but they kind of aren't.
Yeah.
They're still units, and by the way in which the covenant is is written for these, they are SB nine urban lot units, basically. So, and what that means is that you can't come back in and say, oh, I'm gonna now come in and do a subdivision map act, and I'll go ahead and go through a variance process and have reduced setbacks, lot coverage, a whole nine yards. I mean, that's just not even in the wheelhouse of possibilities.
Right, right.
Basically giving you a one, one-time split.
Yeah, yeah.
Where you otherwise couldn't do it through the subdivision map act without going through a discretionary review process, which would be a variance, basically.
Which is here, yeah.
Correct.
The, that was my take, that the, the real purpose of SB nine was to get an applicant to a ministerial decision.
Correct.
Not a discretionary decision.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
And that's, just to be fair, the one application that we have been going through the process on, they're following all of those rules as, as strict as they are, to a certain degree, they're following them all.
The, the current rules.
Correct.
This is all new.
These rules are a little bit different, right, in terms of what we can govern, in terms of setbacks and some of the square footage that we're talking about here. For, for what, for what the other application that's come forward, and I wanna say it's been approved at this point at staff level, is following only what is identified generally through state law.
Okay.
This doesn't exist in state law. This is something different.
Yeah, the second, the second bullet there, properties between 5 and 10,000, that's up to roughly a quarter of an acre. That's an.
Just short of it, yeah.
That's an R zero?
Uh, RO or RO.
R O one?
Well, R O one is one acre, so.
What's R one, then?
R one is typically in the 7,500 to 8,000 square foot range. Let me just pull up the standards here.
And what size home is allowed on that? We're back to the 35% lot coverage.
Yeah, and while, eh, this is not the code section I'm looking for, hold on. All right, here's the fun stuff. All right, so R O half would be 20,000 square feet. R O is 12,000, R O one is 10, R O two is also 10, R O three and RS get to 9,000. And then anything, I mean, really, RS would be the lowest from a minimum standpoint.
Okay. I know at the end of our last meeting, I suggested going away and looking at some sort of gradations here. I have to say, my purpose in doing that was to get us to this point where we have a draft ordinance. It's not that I'm necessarily in favor of this sort of thing. But it seems to me that if we have lot coverage rules already that are a ceiling and we have 800 square feet that is a floor, is there really anything else that we need to do? Does it, does it, does it come out a whole lot different than this? Or if we just said in the ordinance, you can't preclude at least an 800 square foot structure on the lot split, and I'll come back to another point later, but are the rules any different than than laying it out this way?
Not really. If I'm, if I'm being, it, does it provide a tiering for what we're looking at here? Yes?
Does it provide?
A tiering. Remember, we were ta, that's what we were talking about.
A tiering.
So you're looking at a tiering or where each of these fits into a specific box based on square footages.
But the 35% lot coverage applies to all of them and gives you the same sort of tiering, doesn't it?
It would, in a general sense, yes.
And we can't, we can't preclude anything under 800?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt your presentation. I just wanted to understand.
No problem. That's actually the last slide. That was, that was the update for the changes that we made to the ordinance.
Yes, we were focused in our, in our efforts here.
Okay, this is confusing stuff.
Now, the nice thing is, is if I could just jump in here. We have provided for a, a tiering aspect here, which is what the commission asked for, not required. At the end of the day, you could say, eh, this is too confusing, simplify it.
Okay.
Or you want this complication, you want this rigid standard in place. I've seen this used, obviously not for SB nines cuz it's, it's new, but I've seen this, this type of system applied successfully in other cities.
Okay.
Okay. I, I have to work in concrete examples to be able to understand this stuff. So, looking at the small lot, properties that are 5,000 square feet or less. Let's say that person had built a, a house that was 35% lot coverage, which I think you said was 1750 feet. Okay, so we've used up the lot coverage, and yet SB nine state law says you must allow an ADU, a JADU, and a second principal. And they have to be at least 800 square feet each, well, not the JDU, but the ADU and the, and the second principal. Okay, so we've gone way past 35% of lot coverage. Do we just ignore that rule? Does that get ignored or thrown out or whatever?
Well, because you're allowed to subdivide or do an SB nine lot split, and the, the minimum square footage for that lot can be 1,200 square feet, you're more than likely, when you do that, you're not gonna be, you're not gonna be in compliance with any of our rules at that point.
Right, and, and so do we have to allow the lots, but?
Uh, you have to.
You have to.
There's no, there's no discretionary review from this standpoint. It's a checks, it's a check in the boxes at this point. So in terms of the square footage piece, it's an exercise in terms of what we're looking at here. I think that's the, the point with what Sarah had gone over. It's an exercise that we can go through, but at the end of the day, what's going to rule? Well, four. It's the, it's to the power of four. That's what's going to always rule. And we can't, we can't say no to one of the units because it doesn't meet one of our standards at the end of the day.
As long as it meets the SB nine standard.
Yeah, we can, we can identify, yeah, you're not meeting this standard, let's try to get you to meet this standard, this one, maybe it's not gonna be met, right? So somewhere in the middle is where you're gonna end up at the end of the day, period. It's an exercise, but it's to the power of four, always. Always with SB, SB nine.
Can you say that two of the units should be JADUs in order to compress the amount of floor space that's being added to this one lot?
If it's still allowing for four, then yes. What you can't do is you can't come in and identify that one of the, one of the lots is going to be, both be junior ADUs. You can't, one has to be, and referred to as an urban, yeah, as it, as basically another, yes, the second principle, there we go.
Okay.
Let's, let's take, let's take one of those concrete examples, then. 5,000 square foot lot, it's split into two 2,500 square foot lots. There's currently, let's say, a 1,500 square foot house on one, and the other half is currently empty. SB nine says that it is a ministerial decision to put three more 800 square foot minimum structures on that property. Is that correct?
Correct. There's a, and there's a, a number of different ways in which that can be done.
So you're, you're nearing 80% lot coverage.
Mm-hmm. When we're talking about taking away regulation, like our police power, basically, from a land use standpoint, SB nine is a perfect example of that. Which could have been why City Council at the time said, what's the point, right? What's the point of us bringing forward standards when at the end of the day, we may not be able to even impose, impose any of them on these smaller lots? The, the reality is holding to these, I'm just, just throwing out some. I know, you're jumping at the bit. The reality is, is that there are larger lots that could end up going through this, and there are sta, you're, we're talking about smaller lots, right? And those are the ones that are scary, those, and, right, I don't know the percentage, but it's, it's a high percentage because of the number of single-family residential areas. Even our VMU has a lot of single-family homes located with them, right? It allows for opportunity for more, but as they sit right now, they're a single family. So there's some, some concern. I get that. It certainly is when people are calling us, they're like, how is this, how do I do this? And we're walking them through the process, and like, boy, this just feels. They love the idea, but then going through the process, it is, it's, it's cumbersome. Even at a staff level review process, it's cumbersome. Cuz you're still working with a surveyor or an engineer to get that all addressed and the map recorded. I mean, these things are all, you still have to go through the process. It's just taking away the, the discretionary aspect of the body.
In, in.
Hold on, just one second here. Did you wanna add to that?
When, when the attorney gets nervous and. I wanna hear something.
I, I, I just wanted to add something that made me understand this better, which is that we can keep all of our objective zoning standards that we have, including the lot coverage standard, unless it precludes a person from building the 800 square foot minimum unit. So we, we can keep everything that is in existence unless it doesn't allow somebody to build that minimum small unit.
Okay, so what you're, what you're telling me is that somebody could have on this same lot and, and your same example of 1,500 plus three more units at 800, you're up to 80%. So it, it doesn't sound like our lot coverage rule means very much, so I wouldn't.
Separation between buildings counts very much either.
I, so what I'm saying is, is you suggested earlier that we could just go with the 80, with a 35% rule, and, and that does an automatic tiering of sort. I, I tend to like the idea of actual numbers being laid out since 35% doesn't seem to, not gonna matter. I mean, people are going to be able to come in and, and build every square inch of the, of the lot, and that's what I'm worried about. I don't think that's what we really want to see in Ojai. No, they'll get thrown out if it.
SB nine doesn't talk about setbacks. The proposed text amendment does.
Right, with parking or anything like that.
We did add to the.
No, parking is in there, one, one, one per unit, so that's four cars parked on this same lot.
On this same 5,000 square foot lot.
It's like, it's like a small box store.
Yeah, that's what it could turn into. It could just turn into like a two-level, a cement right out to the edge of the property line. That would be really awful.
Do two stories, each floor being 800 square feet on the other half of the lot split. And we can no longer control that second floor because that would be precluding building that 800 square foot thing.
Yeah, but then we have in here 25 feet maximum, so does that override the 25 foot maximum? Cuz you're not allowing.
It's applicable, it's applicable as long as it doesn't preclude the development.
Wake up tonight at 3:00 in the morning saying, as long as it doesn't preclude.
If, if the applicant has another way to build their 800 square feet that doesn't violate one of the standards, they have to go that way. They can't just, because they, the standard isn't physically precluding, precluding the unit if they have another manner of building the unit.
That's actually a good point.
On the property.
That's actually a good point. If they wanted to, to build both units as a, as a single story, but it would violate a, a number of our, our regulations, and instead, they go two stories, which seems kind of odd to say that. But that two-story would then.
I see some of this around town now.
Yeah, the two, well, and I, you had given an example. I would say probably another example is, is taking a garage and converting that garage into a unit and then building up from that garage and then having a separate staircase. You've got two units there right there, almost immediately. So, and that itself is already within an existing footprint. Height, you're raising it probably another eight to 10 feet in order to get that second unit. And those are examples that we're seeing. And those are examples that we're seeing as a part of the ADU, junior ADU aspects right now.
A-
Well, not a junior ADU because the junior ADU has to be attached to the house.
A typical two car garage is about five hundred square feet.
Yeah.
As I recall, okay? So, if someone wants to build on top of that, do they get to build eight hundred square feet on top of that garage?
Correct.
Okay. Then I don't see a problem with just having the rules we have, knowing that as long as we don't preclude building up to four units, each with a minimum of eight hundred square feet.
I would say this about the square footage piece, and I know we're talking about smaller units or smaller lots, but if you think about the larger lots, I think it, it puts this tiering into perspective. Um, even the smaller, to put a ceiling on it, to put a lid on it, from an Ojai perspective, while I, I did mention in the beginning, I'm like, eh, it's a tiering aspect. It doesn't necessarily, it's an exercise, but at the end of the day, may not necessarily be a hundred percent necessary. You'd ask for it. There's value to it. For sure. I mean, I do like the rigid standards. I think that's good. It is clear to a certain degree too. Once you start working out the math from a quantitative standpoint. No, it's very clear if you don't have people that are gonna try to, I mean, the less that they can try to game the system, the better. Yeah, so a minimum versus a lit, like, it really is a lid. So you put that lid there.
The minimum's eight hundred in every case.
Correct. Correct.
We were hoping last time to get some specific inc, tiers of what to do with the bigger lots. And this does that.
Yeah, I like it.
Yes, almost any set of numbers that are one bigger than the next will accomplish that. The question is, is this the right set of numbers?
That is the question. Yeah. I mean, we could always go, we could always go lower. You could. Minimum was eight hundred. Because it, it did say minimum. Remember the last time we brought, I wanna say maybe the first time we brought something forward? We put the cap at eight hundred. Um, and that was the ceiling. Not only was it the floor, but it was the ceiling. And I think most, most of the body here got a little bit queasy, a little bit nervous with that. So we, we came up with this as a alternative. Pardon me? I wasn't opposed to the eight hundred max.
Well, it's, yeah.
Well, it, no, I remember that there were lots that are huge in Ojai.
Yeah.
And to limit it to eight hundred square feet, didn't seem necessary.
Yeah, I, I think it went back to that discussion of what are we trying to accomplish? I mean, if we wanna allow those larger lots to be split and developed however they want, then we get more, we get more density, we get more volume in town. If that's what we want, then there you go.
That's what the state wants.
Yeah, or if you make it more restrictive, more rigid, then it's harder for, it's less profitable, quite frankly, for someone to do that. For someone to have a large lot and split it and only build an eight hundred foot unit. You know what I mean? It's kinda eh. It lowers the incentive value.
Well, we also, we also have a provision in the general plan that says if you're going to build something, it has to be compatible with the neighborhood.
Correct, but SB nine blows all that out.
I don't know. Does it? Does it destroy all of that? Okay.
It's not an objective standard, that's a subjective standard.
All right.
But you also can't, you can't build it if it's going to mess up somebody's view of the mountains. That was in here.
Again, that is a, that is a, subjective and not objective. Yeah, subjective.
Exhibit one, la, uh, page one, the last whereas. Mountain views.
Not a single number in there, except SB nine.
That's true. Oh, did I just kill the best whereas you have? No.
Yeah, because that is, that is subjective and we cannot apply that.
Okay, well-
That's not in the law though. It's just, it's just a recital.
It is a, it is a recital, however, remember this helps to inform the law. And if, if the recital is, is inaccurate, then we have to correct the record. So just know, I, that would be one of the recommendations from staff is to strike that whereas. Commissioner Murphy, thank you for pointing that out.
I, I have another one. And I don't want to, I don't want to get into that squishy language about looking like the rest of the neighborhood. But most residential areas have a front yard setback of forty feet.
Twenty, twenty?
I walk a lot of the town. I don't remember any, I don't remember many places that have less than about a forty foot setback, but it could be. At any rate, if the neighborhood, if, if all of those residential units along the neighborhood have a forty foot setback and this ordinance allows twenty, if you call it SB nine unit, doesn't that doesn't that violate the general plan in some fashion?
Lots of things are going to violate the general plan.
Theoretically it would, however, here's, okay, so you've just, if I could-
Please continue.
Okay, so there is an alternative to that, which I would call objective. And I wanna make sure, Tais, here's how I'm gonna describe this for the example you just gave. And it's something that could be written into the ordinance, I believe, that would then also address the situation that you're talking about. Which is you take the setback of each of the properties within a given neighborhood, or you call it a city block, and then you figure out what the average of that is. And then when you figure out the average, that becomes the setback. So it's a math equation again, sounds objective to me. Objective. And not subjective.
Yeah, maybe you just take the parcel on either side and say, what's the average setback of the parcel on either side?
You could do that as well. I've just found more success-
You don't have any drastic changes.
But question, but if that precludes the building of the eight hundred square foot property, then it doesn't matter.
If it precludes, then all the rules are out.
Right.
Yeah.
But to Tais's point, to the city attorney's point, um, they have to explore other options and explore those other options bef, and then exhaust those other options before circumventing our objective standards. One by one. So it gives us some power still to say, go out and figure that out. Right. And then come back to us. But I wanna make sure that Tais isn't gonna poo poo it immediately.
The only change I would suggest is instead of city block, make some kind of radius, like three hundred feet.
Okay, so if I, if we were to say city block, that's too subjective. Someone could argue, if you give a distance or the number of lots or maybe even a, um, a ra, you said a radius?
Yeah, we could do a radius.
Oh, there you go. You could do a radius.
Or the abutting par, parcels on either side.
Yeah.
No, no, it, it, I think that the radius works. On my block, there are two houses, one of which you really can't count. So there are, there isn't a house abutting on either side. And you can't come up with an average of-
Yeah, okay.
So if you do, so think about it, from a notification standpoint, we do three or five hundred feet. Um, that's a radius and that, that covers a fair amount. Even in larger neighborhoods, you're at least covering five, maybe six residents. And that's, that's getting to a number that's-
Hundred's your notification distance, five hundred is the recusal distance.
Correct. Right. So, could play with either one of those numbers and I think you could arrive at something that begins to satisfy your itch.
And then the, the other suggestion I would make is, if the setback that we find with the radius, it would physically preclude, preclude the building of the eight hundred square foot house. It could be maybe the, the largest setback that would not preclude the eight hundred square foot house.
Yeah.
Well, any one of these calculations is gonna give you a number. And if that number precludes the eight hundred, building the eight hundred square foot unit, then that, then that rule can't be used. Period.
Yes, so, thank you.
And you've explored. I think to Tais's point, and you explored all their, all of their options and exhausted those. Right. Then you start looking at whittling away that, that regulation. Okay, and then- To get, to get to the minimum. So it's not saying that it becomes something that's right up to the street. It begins, it begins to whittle away at the setback. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then you do have the, uh, the ten foot separation between buildings in here, right? Okay, cool, perfect.
Unless, unless it precludes building those eight hundred foot units.
Correct.
No, because the, that's in here, isn't it?
Yes, it's a public safety issue.
Uh, yeah.
I don't know how we can-
They can't ignore that.
How we can whittle away at public safety.
The public sa, if it's a public safety, I think the ten foot setback is for fire, right?
It is.
It's for fire separation, yes ma'am.
Remember the example we were using with that one was either, um, the units having a shared wall? Yep. Or the units being separated. So then the there, if someone comes in and says, well, I can't do that, it's like, can you combine the units?
Was, was that in the SB nine law, the ten foot?
Uh, for fire separation? No. That's not in there.
That was our addition?
Yes.
Now, that, that ten foot separation is, is that only between SB nine units? Or is it between SB nine units and surrounding existing structures?
Outside of the-
Outside of the parcel in question.
Yeah, it can't be outside the parcel. We, we can't, we cannot have regulations that then begin to impact surrounding, um-
I'm, I'm not suggesting that you make your next door neighbor move their garage. I'm saying if their garage is five feet from the property line.
Or right on the property line.
Or right on the property line. How close to the property line do you get to go in light of this ten foot separation rule?
Well, you start at ten. So remember what Tais was saying, you, you start whittling away at all the other options.
Okay, we start by enforcing all of the current rules and then only whittle them away if you can't build all those eight hundred square foot units. Okay?
Just makes it harder. Yeah, it's-
Let's make, yeah.
Good, good, good. Make it harder.
Okay, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have some questions on the resolution, but, but, uh, before that, do we have any more questions of staff? For clarification before we hear from the public?
Yeah, so you said what's open for discussion is these numbers. So the twelve hundred, the eighteen, the twenty-five. We can, we can adjust those, lower them if we want, right? Correct. Okay. I'm, I'm good with lowering them.
Surprise, surprise.
Any other questions for staff at the moment? All right, then we're gonna open the public comment portion of this item. I have one card, Bill Miley.
Hello. Just in the past several days, I read where a superior court has determined that SB nine is not applicable to five charter cities. And I read that it was because it doesn't allow or require affordable housing. How does that apply here? Okay, number two. This is related to development or development standards. Page seven, item eight. The issue of parking spaces, which you already referred to, for one unit, one parking unit, a space for each unit, which could be four on a five thousand square foot lot, that seems to be an issue that will really squeeze living on that lot. Of course, this doesn't apply if it's one half mile within a transit hub. But I don't think we have any transit hubs.
We don't.
We don't? Okay. So I think that's an issue. Parking will take over a five thousand square foot lot. Item nine, under development standards. A height limit at twenty-four feet. I thought our height limit was thirty-five. Why are we limiting this to twenty-four? Because if you have a, maybe a bigger second story, you will have a smaller footprint for the buildings. Question of denial. On the issue of front page, last whereas, subjective standards. If you go over to page nine, item Q at the top. Denial based on adverse impacts. It would seem to me that adverse impacts can be-
Page nine, page nine.
Page nine.
Yeah, we're, what-
I don't see an item two on page nine.
Q, I'm sorry.
Q, oh, sorry.
Item PQ. It's so small, it's hard to read. Seems to me some of the adverse impacts can be concentration of too many people based on research that have done, been done with rats. Put too many people together, they start to argue, conflict, and not get along. Especially if it's in an area where there isn't concentrations of people. Years ago, my in-laws in Bakersfield lived on a cul-de-sac. And we used to visit them. And now, and there were only a few cars parked on the short cul-de-sac. We went there recently just to show the family where they lived. And there's cars all over. It's full of people and full of cars parked on driveways, grass, and on the street. An adverse impact is parking on small lots. What about the issue of fire, fuel for fire concentrated in an area? We have four buildings on a five thousand square foot lot, and the fire hits one, the oil burst. Concentration of fuel. Noise. You put four small families in a five thousand square foot lot, and they create music, activity, voices, whatever. It's gonna be very loud. Lots of calls to the city to complain about noise. Illumination. You have, even though most of the lights are going down, there's still a lot of light there. And let's see, do I have any others? Um, no, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Is there anyone else here present who wishes to speak on this item? Sheri, any raised hands out there in television land?
No, there's not.
All right, then we're going to close the public comment portion of this item and come back to the commission. I wanna thank Sarah Marshall for answering all my questions. I still have some that I think we should be making some changes, but let's start with anything you wanna talk about.
No, it seems as if we're probably successfully boxed in. And, uh, you know, it will be interesting to come and look at what, what's been created here twenty years from now. And I, and I, I fear it, so, but there's nothing I, I can see that we could do to substantially modify.
Did you ever see the movie Ready Player One? You ever saw that? You should see it.
What's the name?
It's called Ready Player One.
Ready Player One. Ready Player One.
Yeah, it's a.
Life in a video game like Tron?
It's a bunch of different stuff, but.
Okay.
Where they really live is a pretty good indication of.
Can I just jump in here real quick?
Yeah.
Chair.
Sure.
Uh, Bill had asked a question and I, I didn't want to ignore it, and that's regarding the recent superior, I think it was a superior court decision that had been made, and it was regarding charter cities and charter cities alone. And I think they mentioned either four or five different cities. Those, we are not a charter city, so it does not apply to this, to this city.
We're general law, we're, we're under the thumb.
Now, he did, uh, Bill had another question. SB nine units do not have to be affordable, correct?
Correct.
They're just, they're just units.
As of right now, they do not have to be affordable.
Market rate, you can go crazy.
Correct.
And then he had another point with the denial based upon adverse impacts. So the denial, if you, it basically says if a building official or its designee makes written findings. So basically, like if there's a proposal or a, um, application comes in, then an official or a designee can make written findings based on a preponderance of evidence that there's adverse impacts to public health, safety, and physical environment, right? So for example, how would, how would the public know if there is an application where they want to make written findings based upon a bunch of evidence?
Yeah, it wouldn't be the public that would be weighing in on this. It would be, it would be staff reviewing it and evaluating.
The whole point of SB nine is to get ministerial decisions, not discretionary decisions.
So staff has to make those written findings.
Right.
So how does staff determine adverse impacts upon public health, safety, and physical environment? Those seem very subjective.
They are very subjective. But what's not subjective is the preponderance of the evidence. That requires quite a bit of, of research, analysis, technical pieces that would need to be plugged in. And at that point, it would be up to a, a judge essentially.
Research on cramming people into dense spaces, New York City, lab rats, all kinds of stuff.
The example that Bill had made was an interesting one.
You could use that.
Here, here's the, here's the reality is the, the states come back and said, look, we've got SB nine.
We don't care.
Figured out.
Right.
Yep, and it's gotta be done at staff level. Yeah. There are, there, I, look, and the reason why that's, that's in there is because there are likely or unlikely, I'm not really sure how to, how to phrase that. Times where that may come into play.
Yeah, yeah. And I guess my question is how can we give staff more ammunition to do these types of adverse impact evaluations?
Well, here's, here's what I would say at this point. This law came into effect in 2022. I think at that time, there was this fear that, that there was going to be a line out the door with the number of SB nine lot splits that were gonna be coming in.
Eight hundred square foot units would pop up like mushrooms in the forest.
True, true.
And I just identified in the last three years, almost three years, we've had five inquiries, two applications, one withdrawn, and one that's gone through the process. The percentages that we're talking about here are extremely low. And the re- one of the main reasons is it's, while it's meant to be, well, the banks, it's meant to be a straightforward process, but it still isn't.
Yeah. Well, I think the big thing too is the banks, the financing.
The financing is a, is a big piece.
But if, that's the problem. If they do come around, which they will eventually.
They are coming around.
They'll figure it out.
Certain banks are, sure.
Yeah. And then once they do figure it out, then we will see them popping up everywhere like mushrooms, just like ADUs are popping up everywhere like mushrooms.
And I will admit, in, in talking to, to the planning community that I have access to in the LA area and surrounding, there was a large number of applications were coming in, and immediately it became apparent that there was a bigger issue than just the process.
Right.
So.
Yeah. So that, that's why I agree with these, you know, rigid standards that we're trying to apply. And I think the more rigid we can make them, the better, because even though we have low volume now, in the future, that could certainly change. And if banks start figuring this out, then it could all, yeah, you know. It is, yeah. So, um, so anyway, I, I want to just quickly talk with, with you guys about what do you think about lowering these amounts? Or are you guys comfortable with the amounts?
Were, were these, were these, um, numbers created based on the thirty-five thousand, uh, thirty-five percentage of lot coverage? Is that kind of what?
Well, there certainly couldn't be for the one that's twenty thousand now. That could be twenty acres.
Sarah's like, I had a dart and I threw it, and I didn't know that number.
So here's, here's the interesting thing, and this is what Sarah just told me, although you could say it too, but I'll say it. Here's the interesting thing. This has not been done in any, any other jurisdictions, at least that we've been able to find at this point.
With hard numbers in a tiered fashion.
In a tiered fashion like this. I have seen something like this done for ADUs years ago, but it was actually used to deter ADUs. When cities were locked tight on not be able to, not being able to use conditional use permits, we found other ways in which to, um, put certain parameters on it. This is one of those, one of those pieces.
It does sound like it has a common aim, and that is to reduce the chance of an SB nine unit coming into existence.
Well, at least limiting the square footage, because at this point, the square footage is at a minimum of eight hundred. And then that's where there's a period and not a common.
If, if the applicant comes in and has a big lot and wants to exceed, assuming that, that the city council approves these, wants to exceed our maximum, couldn't they just then apply for an variance?
No.
No, they can't.
There is no, yeah, there is no variance provision with something like this, e- especially if they come in and they've exhausted every other avenue. Now, if they haven't exhausted every other avenue, which I, in the five that we've had conversations with, they really are exhausting every, every avenue. So I, I haven't had an example where, where someone's come in and said, I'm not doing that, right? They're trying to find ways in which to fit as many units, the four, power to four, right? Within that subdivision or their urban lot split. So. Yeah, nothing else to add there.
So Sarah, I guess that's the question. How did, how'd you come up with the numbers?
Uh, well, without finding any jurisdictions to base it off of, I just tried to come up with numbers that were between five thousand and seven thousand square feet difference as the tiers increase.
Oh, okay. So seven thousand difference, sorry.
At one point, there's, um, a difference that is seven thousand square feet from the previous tier.
It's from twelve hundred to eighteen hundred.
Correct, yes, thank you.
That's six hundred.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So you tried to keep it within that threshold?
Correct.
I would say this, most of the time, from a, from a floor standpoint, I think to, to Sarah's point, twelve hundred square feet is, is pretty, pretty reasonable from a, a single family resident standpoint. You go to a lot of different cities and you'll find the floor for a single family residences, yeah, it's a two bedroom. You probably, in LA, I was, when we were first looking at houses, I was seeing three and four bedrooms at twelve hundred square feet. I'm like, that doesn't make any sense. They're closets, basically, right? But they were still selling it that way.
Yeah.
So the opportunities there, twelve hundred square feet is, is pretty spot on in terms of how you would look at the five hundred, um, thousand, um, lot size. It's pretty spot on. If you go any lower than that, I have seen a thousand, it gets a little bit, a little bit dicey, and probably that standard gets a little bit, they'll just start skirting it.
Yeah, okay, all right.
And at the same time, none of these, none of these numbers are going to apply if we've exhausted all the possibilities of building all these eight hundred square foot units. Correct? Then these will not apply.
Impact that for me, when you say exhausted all, what do you mean by that?
We've done a lot split on a five thousand square foot lot. Okay, I don't know what's on the first lot right now, but you're allowed to build another eight hundred square foot unit on the first half of the lot and two eight hundred square foot units on the other half of the lot.
No, because you could have a J, a JADU, which would be smaller.
You could. Look, it's saying that you, that we cannot preclude you.
Minimum eight hundred for a residential unit, right?
Correct. You could still build a, you could still.
Call it a JADU, but it's still gotta be eight hundred square feet.
Correct. It would be a, a junior ADU at that point. You can call it a junior ADU, but it's not a junior ADU at that point. Because we would immediately say that's not a junior ADU.
I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out if this is any more workable or any simpler than just saying, we have lot coverage rules right now.
I think it's adding another.
And you have an eight hundred square foot floor, okay? But the, the eight hu- the lot coverage rules, just like these caps, are gonna go away in the face of SB nine if I can't build my four total units on that five hundred, five thousand square foot lot.
The exercise is still necessary. I think that's the, the important piece. I know in the beginning I said, you don't have to do this, right? But if you're wanting a, a floor and a ceiling, and you're still requiring them to do, to do the work, they still have to do the homework at that point to figure it out.
I think this adds another level of.
Of discouragement?
Possibly.
And if, if the.
I mean, I, I.
I'm, I'm not sure that we as a government body should be admitting that we're trying to discourage the building of more residential units.
Well, what we can't do is identify, um, any sort of subjective regulations, but we can certainly identify objective pieces, which is what we have here. It's the same, um, exercise that Sarah and I are going through right now regarding the design, um, guidelines. Right? Those design, objective design guidelines are, are not easy in terms of what we're going through. And what we're talking about here is not easy.
No, what I've seen in.
But you're also recognizing.
Is notoriously subjective.
Well, we, yeah, and it can't be. They're objective. They have to be objective in terms of how we move forward. So any of the compatibility with the neighborhood, all that squishy language gets parked.
Spanish revival style, is that objective or subjective?
You can use that as long as you're giving very specific.
What does that mean?
Parameters, exactly. So there's, there's cities that are doing that successfully, and those are the cities that we're looking at.
And, and Thais, correct me if I'm wrong, but Steve said something that as a government body, we shouldn't be saying that we shouldn't have, allow for additional, you know, construction or building. But by law, I mean, I don't think that's a legal thing. I think that's a planning thing, and for planning, you could certainly do that because you gotta make sure you have the infrastructure to handle that sort of volume.
Yes, legally, there's no issue.
No issue.
The only issue would be like a cultural issue of, do we want to say this, you know?
But a city could certainly say that, no, we're not building any more homes. And then the cit- the state could say, too bad, you're gonna build them.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Which is what they've done in effect.
In effect, sure, yeah. But just like.
No, no legal issue with that.
But we can't, we can't control people buying and selling properties and building. I mean, that's, but we can create structure in our code to limit that.
Guide them.
Guide them, exactly.
To sum it up, we're able to control what we can control at this point.
Right, yeah.
Without saying what that is.
But we could say what it is. We can. Thais said we could say it. There's no problem there. Yeah.
Come forward and ask a question then.
Only if it's clarifying, Larry.
Well, it's clarifying. Do all of these additional homes have to be connected specifically to the sewer line, the water line, and gas line?
That's an issue we're gonna get to before we're done.
Because that's pretty subjective.
Coming up.
Yeah, that's pretty.
That's objective.
Objective.
No, that's good.
Okay. I would like to. Have we beaten this poor dead horse to death? Okay. Can we look at page eight of twelve? Item eight A. I think we talked about this a little bit last time, but I don't like the idea of, or if there is a car share vehicle located within one block of the parcel. Share, car share vehicle businesses will come and go. If you give them this exception, it's permanent. Even if the car share goes away.
I think this is part of SB nine, though. I don't think we can change that.
Correct. It is built into that.
The business about half a mile from a high quality transit corridor is already in the state code.
Yeah, correct.
And under that language, and you have to go through government code, public resources code, I think, highway and safety code to get to the bottom of it, but the fact is, we don't have any of that stuff in Ojai.
Correct.
We have, we have some bus stops here, but they don't have frequent enough traffic.
They don't qualify.
We don't have any railroad here.
Right.
We don't have any highway here.
Right.
That provides that high quality transit. So that part doesn't matter.
Okay.
All right, well, I have, I have some things that I'd like to at least bring up about the, the, the ordinance itself. This is exhibit one to attachment A. On page one, and this is all gonna be in exhibit one. Page one, the third recital talks about a maximum of two residential units within a single family residential zone. I presume that's per parcel, but it doesn't say so. But that's sort of in conflict with, with other recitals. Now, if you go to page two, the third recital, that says up to two units per lot. Up two, okay? And I raised the question earlier about what if the original lot has a primary, an ADU, and a JADU, three residential units, and then you do the lot split? Can you do the lot split? The answer I got back from Sarah was, no, you can't do an SB nine lot split if one of the two resultant lots has three residential units on it. I seem to remember reading SB nine a while ago. It's as dense as anything the legislature ever writes, but I don't remember that part.
Now, you can, here's, here's what they, go ahead.
If one of those residences, units, is on, you're, you're.
Let's say the.
You're proposing that all three are crowded onto one half.
Of the lot split.
Okay, because they, they can vary the lot split. It doesn't have to be fifty-fifty. It can be forty-sixty. But you're, but you're saying, okay.
I'm just saying, what if that's the situation? It, does SB nine then not become applicable because you're proposing a lot split where one of the resultant lots has more than two residences?
Here's, here's how I'll respond to that. And that's, that's within the parameters of what these, these guidelines are providing. The minimum lot area that you can do an urban lot split for is twelve hundred square feet, twelve hundred or twelve fifty. Am I right?
Twelve hundred or forty percent?
Yes. So what you're doing, and this is again a math problem, right?
Whichever is greater, twelve hundred or forty percent, whichever is greater.
Correct. I think that's correct. So while you're talking about what happens if this is the case, guaranteed that they're gonna have, um, a civil or surveyor. guaranteed that they're gonna have um, a civil or surveyor trying to figure out how you, how you can draw a line through a house and then suddenly put in a two hour firewall or the one hour firewall that we've got in here to address that situation.
Or they could, or they could eliminate the J A D U.
I highly doubt that they would actually eliminate one of the units. They would just figure a way around.
But if they've got a small J A D U that-
I mean, it's a possibility. I can't rule that out. I mean, it's, it's a possibility, although I in the examples that we've had conversations with some of these um, residents, they're trying to figure out how to add, not how to subtract.
But, well, they would be adding because rather than give up on the project.
I know you're talk- Chair Quilso, you're talking about hypothetical.
I'm, I'm trying to understand how SB nine works.
Likely could end up being a reality. It's power four. I mean, simply, it's a power four, and there's parameters that are built in here, and that's-
Yeah, okay. Page two, the third recital, has up to two units per lot, okay? I get that. But, and, and so does page four, section ten eighteen one oh two A and B, says two units per lot. So does ten eighteen one oh four A, says two units, okay? Everywhere we find it, but then in one place, it talked about increasing from three to four units.
In total.
In total.
Mm-hmm.
Well, there, I think-
And, and so my question is, what if three of those four units are already on one side of the lot split? If, if I'm the owner of a primary and a J A D U and an A D U, and the city tells me, in order to do the lot split, I'm gonna have to put the A D U in the other lot, and it won't be mine anymore when I sell that? Is that what's going on here?
Some of that, yeah. You don't have to sell it. You still subdivide and then maintain, but you have that option then at that point.
But I can't, but I can't have three residential units on either piece of the lot split.
Correct.
Okay.
These are, these are the objective standards, but they are still the standards, and that, that is not something that precludes the density, right? Two and two. I mean, it's to the power of four, but it's two and two.
Two single family units, right? Then you could do the junior, then you could do the A D U and the junior A D U on each of those. Yeah.
Right.
Right.
One of the units on the new half of the lot is gonna be a primary.
Yeah, it'll be a single family resident.
Yeah, okay.
You have two single family residents. Both of those single family residents can have an A D U and a junior A D U.
Now you've got six.
No, or. You can only have four in total, so you get to choose whether it's an A D U or a J A D U.
Oh, got it, got it, got it. Okay, that makes sense. Okay, got it. Yeah, max of four.
Okay. Uh, back to the exhibit, page one. Third recital. It talks about cannot be proposed in prohibited locations, and I've read six five nine thirteen point four and B through K, such as an earthquake fault zone. I couldn't find that anywhere else in the state code other than six five nine thirteen point four A six, and it's, I don't know whether it's B or K or somewhere in between. Can you explain what that is and what the practical meaning of it is in the city of Ojai? What's an earthquake fault zone?
I mean-
You look at faults, they're everywhere. So what's a fault zone?
Yeah, so there's, there's mapping, there's, there's GIS mapping that identifies where those are. And so for each of these that come in, that's one of the boxes that we check.
Right, okay, can-
In terms of reviewing it. Not only reviewing that, but also as a part of the process in terms of what we're looking at here, there's a totter report, and that totter report identifies any existing easements. So for instance, the conservation easement, if there's a conserva- conservation easement placed on that property, it's one of, it's one of the pieces that basically um, takes that away. So the, the provisions here are prohibited for obvious reasons. One, obviously with the fault line, it's for safety purposes. Um, the conservation easement is, there's obviously a reason why that's, that area is now can, has a conservation.
Yeah, a conservation easement, though, is a, a line drawn on a parcel map somewhere that I, as a, as a homeowner, could at least read and try to understand.
And there's an, it-
The earthquake, earthquake fault zone, I don't know where to go to try to understand that.
There's, there's maps that we take a look at that are provided by the state. Yeah. And they're updated. Go, don't Google it. You can Google it. It'll get you to the maps eventually.
Eventually.
I don't remember the, the specific-
I don't either.
Oh, GLA. Published by the state. Okay, so if you look at, oh, it's actually the response that you provided. So in government code, which is the one we just mentioned, state geologist and official maps published by the state geologists. Yeah, so, and these maps are updated periodically. I wouldn't say they're updated every year, because as we know, fault lines don't change um, every year, but-
State geologist, yes.
They are, they are updated on a infrequent basis.
See, you could Google it.
All right.
Cool.
Oh. Now, that'll, that'll come back. I noticed that, this is page three, section four, it gives us a title for chapter eighteen. And title, chapter three right now has a, has a more inclusive title. It just says subdivision regulations, I think. And so while I guess it's not directly a result of this, it's not directly a part of this case, I think we might be better off renaming chapter three if we're gonna have chapter eighteen have this specific a title. Chapter three might be Standards for Qualified Subdivision Map Act Subdivisions and Development, so that people who read the code will know chapter three is only subdivision map act stuff. Chapter eighteen is only SB nine stuff.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, that's good.
Um, okay, we talked about airspace subdivisions, yeah.
Development standards, urban dwelling airspace.
Okay, and if there's more than two residential units on a lot after the proposed split, then SB nine does not apply. You cannot have a ministerial decision.
Yeah, if they, well, it, I just get back to the two and two, where it's up to their civil and or surveyor to figure out how to redraw that line.
Up to two per lot or up to four total?
Two on each lot.
And up to four total.
Yeah, four in each lot, up to to- four total.
And stay within the, the parameters of forty, sixty.
Mm-hmm.
Let me see, fourteen. Okay, I had, I had some errata as well. There's, there's another one that, that I'm very concerned about, and that is the requirement, let me see if I can find the reference, the requirement that an SB nine unit be connected to sewer. That is um, I don't remember which, which, which piece of the, the proposed ordinance that is. I know it's in the staff report, but um, oh, it's on, it's on exhibit one, page, well. Page eight. Item thirteen and fifteen. Okay. If what we're trying to do here is stop all SB nine processes in the arbolada, that will do it. There are, there are, other than at the edge of the arbolada along Foothill Road, as an example, there are no sewers.
Right.
There are no residences with one exception, the old Lobel House on El Toro, which has an easement through a lot that is on Foothill to get to the sewer on Foothill. There's no other sewer service anywhere in the arbolada, okay? If, if this goes through saying sewer connections are required for all SB nine units, then there will be no SB nine units in the arbolada because it will cost too much for the first homeowner to put in sewer.
Cost prohibitive. So I would turn that question to Thais. Legal standpoint, does this still have legs?
From a legal standpoint, there, there's no reason why we couldn't have this standard, so it's a policy question for the commission.
And we don't know what the prices are.
The prices?
Yeah, I mean, you, I mean, market varies, you know, one, you know what I mean?
For putting in sewer?
Yeah. I mean, I'm sure you know, but I'm saying-
Yeah, from, from experience, I can tell you-
Twenty years from now.
Five years ago, it was a hundred dollars a foot.
Right, twenty years ago. Twenty years from now, we don't know what that cost will be.
No, we have no idea what it'll be, but it's not gonna be lower than it is today.
Could, you are probably right.
And, and that's what concerns me. Um, as, as I phrased the question that I asked staff earlier, unless the homeowners in the arbolada do something like create a community facilities district and issue bonds and sell bonds and pay some general contractor to come in and put sewer mains throughout the arbolada so that people can connect by putting in a lateral. And that's gonna cost, my rough estimate is twenty to fifty million dollars. Um, no homeowner's gonna take that on. And so having this requirement, which in general, from a public safety point of view and public health point of view, I'm in favor. Septic systems are a health hazard, particularly in, in periods of heavy rain. But is this an objective standard that precludes the building of any, any units of any size, much less eight hundred square feet?
Can I jump in there? Um, I think that the health standards would begin to apply here, that you could make a case that one, you're worried about one person wanting to subdivide their lot, and you're protecting his rights, but what about the rights of all of the other people who live in the arbolada where they are failing the percolation tests and having terrible health issues? So I think that would be a case where Lucas could make a denial just on, based on health.
If, if I could add to, SB nine states that an objective standard cannot physically preclude the building of the eight hundred square foot unit, not monetarily or another-
Or any other way.
Way of precluding, yes.
That's fair. That's good.
Okay.
And one day, the city might decide to raise a bunch of bonds and fix that problem, but-
Yeah, right.
The city had the chance to do that fifty years ago and didn't.
It didn't. They could do it again.
When it was cheap.
Yeah, yeah.
They're not gonna do it today.
Maybe twenty years from now.
The city budget is, what, ten, twelve, fourteen million, something like that? Eleven to fourteen. The city's not gonna spend an extra twenty-
Oh, no, but you raised-
To put sewers in the arbolada.
No, you raised bonds. You taxed the, the citizens and you raised bonds. Or, yeah, never mind.
Have you, have you covered all of your points?
I think I have. Yes, ma'am.
Are there other questions?
No, I'm, I'm good. I'm good.
May I move?
Yes.
That we recommend?
Yes.
The acceptance of, who are we calling it?
What are we accepting? The ordinance of the city of Ojai City Council.
There's, there's no ordinance number yet, so um-
It's a text amendment.
It's a text amendment.
Text amendment.
Yeah. TA twenty-four dash zero one?
Right, with the uh, amendments of eliminating the first, the last, whereas on page one. Are there other?
There was some other arbolada, yeah.
Other amendments that we actually changed something?
Yes, on, on page nine, ordinances, section six, line four, ordinances should have an apostrophe.
Ah, okay.
Okay, uh, page eight, section ten eighteen one oh four P like Paul, line two, capital O should be little O. I had some suggested wording changes, but I think the gist of it is okay.
Is there a second?
Oh, I'll second.
Any more discussion? I have to say, um, I have a feeling this is gonna pass. I don't like it in its current form. I think it's too restrictive. And outside of certain restrictions that are within it, I see it as necessary, but I will not vote to recommend it. Anyone else? All right, Sherry, let's call the roll on item three, please.
Murphy?
Aye.
Bennett?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Quillissey?
No.
Thank you.
All right.
That was painful but useful.
Yeah.
It was, definitely.
We're looking twenty years into the future. Or if the banks figure it out, a couple more years.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, there ought to be a simple way to, for the banks to figure that out, by the way.
Yeah, I think it is.
Look at your property tax bill. It has land and it has improvements, okay? The improvements are either gonna be on this part or on that part. And the land is the land. Look at the area.
It's if you have a mortgage on a piece of property for like four hundred thousand dollars, it's on that property, it's on that lot.
Right.
If you split it, what happens to that four hundred thousand?
Part of it goes here, part of it goes there.
But you don't know this guy who bought it. They have no relationship to the bank, so that's a-
Can't hear you. What?
You lean on the property.
What, what?
We're done. We're not done?
No, no, we're, we're not done, but what happens is-
Up to item four, future agenda items.
The primary lot
Yeah.
must be worse, the mortgage, as it exists.
Okay, that makes sense. Yeah, so then the second lot wouldn't matter.
So the, then it doesn't matter.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense. I can see that. Yeah, because that's zero risk.
Yeah. Yes, we must protect those banks.
It's all about risk.
It's all about risk. Banks and insurance companies.
Protect them, right, yes.
Okay, Lucas, uh-
Future agenda items? Okay, so um, good and bad, are you ready? So tiny houses and fourteen forty are not going to be going on the fifteenth. Those should have had question marks by them. We reached out to the applicants. They're not gonna be in town on the fifteenth. So we're pushing the fourteen forty to June fifth.
Okay, the tiny house ordinance is not gonna be?
That one's not gonna be ready because we have staff that's out of town right now, and um, they really need to button that up before we bring that forward for
Cool.
A third round, I believe.
Third round, fun stuff.
So-
What useful can we do on the fifteenth?
Could take a break.
Take a day off.
Yeah.
That would be useful.
It's up to this body, um, at this point, to think through that, and obviously Chair Quilso, you and I can talk after this to s- to see if there's anything to, to put on the agenda, but at this point, I'm kind of looking and leaning towards just, just canceling that meeting. So, we can talk afterwards, though, Chair Quilso. So, we can talk afterwards, though, Chair Quilisi.
Well, if it's, if it's the, the consensus of the commission that we cancel the meeting on the fifteenth, which, by the way, is the date on which three of our terms expire.
Yeah, might be a good.
Um.
We don't know what's gonna happen on the fifteenth.
We don't know what's gonna happen in terms of those three seats.
Is this like when the, when the clock rolls from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand, we're like, what's gonna happen?
Yeah, yeah.
When, when does, when does the council address this?
I don't know.
Good question.
Uh, we can't go into too much detail. It's not an item on the agenda, but it's not on the, it's not on their agenda in the near future.
It's not on their agenda yet.
Not yet.
Right. The rule is, if your terms expired, you serve until you are reappointed or.
Hey, don't laugh.
Do not, do not. I love it.
Don't laugh.
John's there. Not so fast.
Yeah, we, we can't party yet.
Well, if it's the sense of the commission and the sense of the staff that there's nothing to do on the fifteenth, I see no point in meeting.
All right.
It's kind of where I'm trending.
I'm good with that.
Okay. See, what else is on our agenda here?
Uh, directors' reports?
Oh, yeah.
Do have a couple of.
Directors' report?
Yeah, I wanted to just mention a couple of things if I could.
Right.
Um, tonight, we just heard about director's report, not a discussion. Okay, I'm just providing information here. I don't want it to turn into a Q and A and then Thais get mad at me for responding to things. Um, for the future, there is an item that's gonna be coming to Ca, to City Council in regards to TUPs, and there's gonna make conceptual discussion about the artisan markets and, um, whether or not to look at revisions to the code, um, provide opportunities for those, because there is obviously an opportunity for these, um, up and coming.
Yeah.
Anybody who's an entrepreneur recognizes that the way in which you start is from the grassroots.
Yeah.
And then it either grows into a business or it doesn't, right? That's the, that's the concept. So that's gonna be some of the discussion that's gonna be had with council and then looking at some direction from them.
Cool.
So.
In one sense, it would be like somebody with a New York City sidewalk hot dog cart.
Exactly.
Pulling up in front of a restaurant here and selling hot dogs out, outside the front door.
Yeah.
Should we allow that?
Right.
So.
Yeah. It's the competition piece, but more importantly, it's about how we are an artisan community, right? How do we, how do we continue to foster that? Right?
I think that, that, um, our businesses should step up. For example, the poppy store. We, or, um.
Let's not mention specific stores. And this is a report that's coming from the, from the director, director's report. I, like I said before, I don't wanna be a Q and A at this point.
Businesses could invite local artists to participate in their business.
Testimonies tonight that some do.
That's, that's right. That's what I'm trying to get to. And I think between that and our scheduled fairs, we have quite a bit of possibility for.
Yeah, and to clarify from a director's report, we, we literally have ten, ten to twelve that happen each year. And of those ten to twelve that happen each year, about eight invite the lo, local only. I did the, I, I did the math and I had some conversations with our events coordinator, and it's, it's not like they don't have opportunities. They're definitely abound. And I would say most, it seems like most in, in the local sense, take advantage of it in talking with the chamber.
Maybe, maybe we need to publicize it more. Maybe it could be, um, something on the city website.
Those are the pieces. Thais is getting, I can tell she's getting mad. Those are just reports out. Less discussion, more me reporting. Thank you. Those are just the things that I had researched. Really didn't bring much context to, to the, um, to what was before the body for tonight, but I wanted to put it in the director's report for you. And then I wanted to also identify, and you've already kind of alluded to that, terms are, um, coming up at the middle of, of May. And as a director's report, as a director's report, Chair Quilisi's term is up on the fifteenth. Uh, not Commissioner Murphy's. That is actually up, um, on the twenty, on twenty twenty-six. Vice Chair Trent is up also on the fifteenth, and so is Commissioner Bennett's, is on the fifteenth as well. So what that means is that butts are in seats. If you are wanting to reapply, now is the time to do that. And then we go through the process.
Cool.
All right? That's it for me.
Any reports from commission members? I don't see a city council liaison anywhere. Do you have one online, Sherry?
No, I do not.
Okay. Then at eight fifty-six, we are adjourned.
Boom. Amazing. Nice work.
Now, with the microphones turned off.